Okay, good morning. We'll call this morning meeting to order. First thing is the approval of the agenda. And just to let you know that number item seven will be moved to next week. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we're going to motion a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, roll call vote.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Mr. Whelan.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay. We get any citizens that called in?
We have not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I don't see any in the audience, okay? Kathy! You should sit up front right away. We have our update this week of the COVID-19. Kathy and Jamie will be digging us through that.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just handed out the case information. So, in Clay County, our confirmed cases are 1756. 1,756. Nineteen of those are newly reported cases. We had an additional death, so we're now at 42. And you can see on the second page on the back, we still have all of the dates, cases in Clay County. So, you know, clearly in September and October, we've seen increases in cases and then increases in the active cases. Now, we're at 227. They've been kind of in the, you know, the 200 range for September and October. And we've talked about those increases with the higher ed and the schools and gatherings. Our 14-day case rate also increased. That's the rate that, that's the 14-day case rate per 10,000 people. That's the rate that we share with the school districts. They use that as one of the data sources to determine whether, what their distance, whether they'll have distance learning, hybrid, or in-person. That's just one of the data sources. They also have to determine their staffing, if they have enough teachers and subs, how many kids are positive in their school districts, how many teachers are positive. So, it's just one of the data sources that they use. And we meet with them weekly to kind of talk through what is happening. And sometimes we, they'll call us if they have questions about should they hold this particular sporting event, if they have a positive case, and those kinds of things. So, we work with the school districts pretty closely on their decisions about distance learning. So, that 46.6 is up there. But the recommendation was that they continue their learning modules as they currently are doing. And then we'll just look at the next rate. So, we'll have a different rate on Thursday. And so, we'll see what that rate is and then determine their needs with, with their, how they're providing their learning. It's challenging for them because, you know, they have, I mean, when they're impacted with the teachers, that's a real hardship for them to determine how they're going to provide that learning.
Excuse me, our increased rate, you know, now is not because of more testing, I don't think, the way it sounds. It's just because there's more people getting it, though, aren't there?
We, it's the combination. So, we continue to do testing and we want to continue to keep doing testing so we can provide the medication strategies. Because if you, if you stop the testing, then you're not able to catch, you know, sometimes we can catch people when they're even asymptomatic and hope to stop the spread, slow it down at least a little bit.
But there's no mass testing going on right now, is there?
Well, we just had, you know, that previous mass testing event at the National Guard and the Armory. And then Jamie will talk about some other testing that will come up. So, I'll let her talk about that. But yeah, currently, right now, no, there isn't a mass testing site.
Okay.
So... And then Minnesota confirmed cases are at 113,000. So, you know, Minnesota has continued to see some increase cases and some increases in hospitalizations and ICU. In Minnesota hospitals, they aren't at their max capacity. They have ability to have more COVID cases, but they certainly have seen a ramp up. Our hospitals on the North Dakota side have also seen a bit of an increase, but they still have the ability to expand beds as they need to. Staffing might be the issue for them is just finding appropriate staffing if they have to expand beds for COVID cases. So, right now, they were able to, they're able to manage the cases that they have. But, you know, certainly, as we see the, how significant the numbers are in North Dakota and how high that, those rates are, there's certainly that concern because we're seeing the numbers ramp up. North Dakota is in a worse spot than Minnesota for the cases. So, we're seeing it around North Dakota, South Dakota, and I believe Iowa. There's some states that are really ramping up to become pretty significant areas to be concerned. So, Minnesota, it's not that we aren't concerned, but we aren't seeing that huge ramp up that they are. We just have to be very conscientious when we talk about the things that we know right now is wearing your mask when you're in gatherings and eliminating those large gatherings and not being masked. So, you know, those are mitigation strategies. Six-foot, staying six-foot away from people in less than 15 minutes. And, you know, of course, the hand hygiene. And you think about the only things we have right now is, are those measures until we get that COVID vaccine. And, you know, you noticed today on the national news, there's a little delay in one of those. We have weekly meetings with Minnesota Department of Health about when it comes and how it may come and how we may distribute that. So, we're still in conversations about that because there's a lot of unknowns from the CDC. So, until the COVID vaccine comes and we can get the large community vaccinated, we still only have these measures to prevent the spread. We really want to stress that it's important to get your influenza vaccine. I know that all of you have had that, so that's great. We really encourage the public, get it now. It's a good time. It's October. It's good to get it now to be vaccinated against influenza. That doesn't protect you from COVID. So, and we, and we want people to get it sooner than later. So, we're hoping people take advantage of the opportunities. There's plenty of opportunities to get the influenza vaccine. Healthcare systems have it. Pharmacies have it. And so, there's opportunities to get that. So, now's the time.
When you say it does prevent against COVID, this flu vaccine right now, I mean, the flu vaccine that we got, did that just prevent you against one certain type of flu? That's it?
It will protect you from influenza virus, which is completely different than the COVID virus.
Oh, it's completely different, okay.
Right. It's a virus. They're both viruses, but the influenza virus, so they, they match that up. They, they work on that for a whole year and they, and they protect you against the worst strain. That doesn't mean that some people might get a mild strain of influenza, but it should protect you from the worst strain, the one that will cause hospitalizations, deaths. So, it's important to get that. They're really concerned if people have influenza virus and the COVID virus at the same time. How will that affect your body? It's, would be a pretty significant hit on the system. So, that's the, that's the reason they're really pushing the influenza vaccine so you can at least be mostly protected from that virus when the COVID virus comes around. And we, we hope a lot of people will take advantage of that when we see that vaccine. So, more to come on that. Any questions on, on some of the numbers? Or the back page shows we still have a large number of cases in that 18- to 22-year-old range. That's our highest. And then, of course, the 30- to 39, that's the second highest. So, we're seeing the numbers in the, maybe the younger folks. Our long-term care seems to be, you know, that was a big hit when we first started with COVID, but it is not the highest numbers right now.
Mr. Chair?
Good.
A question. Kathy, I appreciate the numbers. I know that I've said it's helpful to see trends. I know that the schools are tracking the CAS county numbers as well, just so that they can get a broader picture. Is there any way that we could get that case positivity just included? I don't need all the data, but just include it in ours so we can kind of see the whole picture. Add it to this.
You're asking about the school.
Just add, no, just add the CAS county case positivity rates so we can see what they're trending at?
The CAS county rate?
Correct.
Oh, okay, sure.
Is that possible to add?
Yeah, I can, I can probably get that. We've talked about the, why we can't provide the Clay, we can provide a Clay County positivity rate, but it's not accurate because of the negative test results that we do not get. So, it's based on all tests, so.
Right. And I guess that's my point, is if we're not getting, if we can't, for whatever reason, people are doctoring in North Dakota, get that, it just helps us to see the whole.
Yeah.
So, why are you talking about the seven, sorry, Kathy, are you talking about the seven-day positivity rate? Or are you also referring to they're doing the 14-day?
I think the 14-day case rate per 10,000 people is helpful, if that's available.
Yeah, I can, I can check with Fargo and see if we can get those, the CAS county rates.
My other question is, I know that we have been careful not to release positive cases by location. It's just county as a whole. As we move forward to addressing these maybe micro pockets of positive cases, is that something that public health is doing to address those pockets before they leak out into the community on a larger scale?
Yeah, we, we certainly can get a lot of the information off of our, our system that provides all the positive cases. So, we can, our, our case investigators and contact tracers can alert us if there's kind of a hotspot, particularly in a community.
But are we doing anything to mitigate the hotspot?
Other than the follow-up, so the case investigators, contact tracers are following up on all of those cases. What they're seeing currently with the data is it's really associated, so much of it is associated to the social gatherings. So, providing that information again and the education about, you know, trying to keep away from the large group gatherings and especially when they're not masking and if they're indoors. Outdoors, there's a little bit more protection and an ability to social distance, but indoors and large gatherings is seemingly our, our problem at this point, so.
So, then to further on that is, are the schools alerted as to neighborhood hotspots? And I, part of how I ask this is to allow us to have all the tools necessary to make the decision that would help to slow this, or?
Yeah, the schools, the schools are alerted only to their cases that they have with their staff and students. So, we aren't alerting the schools if there's a particular hotspot in a community, as we're not allowed to. But the schools are really monitoring their hotspots. And their hotspots would be really all of their students that are positive and quarantined and all of their staff.
And I, I just think that that would probably be helpful to know, for instance, one of our rural schools, if there is a hotspot in one of those neighborhoods, they're less likely to allow kids back into the classroom. Or on the flip side, if the hotspot does not include that community, that would change their trajectory as well.
Their, their guidance is to really just look at their students and staff. That is their guidance from MDH. So, looking at how many students you have out, how many staff you have out, how many positives and how many quarantines. So, that's, that's their data that they're looking at. And then, of course, the, the whole county rate, but not specific to the city.
Well, I, I know that MDH doesn't take marching orders from really anybody, specifically a commissioner in Clay County. But I definitely feel like that is a gap that would, that information would help a lot of different cases, for sure.
I know, I know the schools expressed concern about the information going out about a hotspot in their particular school. They do not want that to be public information. So, I'm bringing that back to MDH to.
Well, I'm not saying that I want to publicly do it, but I think between public health and administration, you surely could alert them.
You know, I would like to add that Kathy is hosting weekly meetings with the superintendents from the schools. And so, that is an opportunity for them to share.
Okay.
There was a meeting yesterday that was an additional meeting that had to do with some issues that they wanted to discuss. So, she's hosting those meetings locally and giving them the opportunity to share as well.
And that's just the superintendents on those calls, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? I'll let Jamie talk then about.
Hey, I'm gonna start with, just to highlight a few of the things that Kathy pointed out. Testing was one. Kathy announced last week that Clay County has been identified as a semi-permanent testing site. So, when you talked about testing in the community, it's coming. We don't have a location yet. We have another planning meeting today. The hope is, by Minnesota Department of Health, that they will be ready to go this weekend even. Kathy talked about that this is a private company that is going to manage all the staffing. It won't have an impact on our staff, but it will provide an opportunity across our region for testing in the community. They will be doing the test at no cost. They're using funding, the state is using funding to support that. But they will bill insurance if a person has the ability to bill the insurance. But there wouldn't be a bill back to that person at all. So, so that will increase the opportunity for testing. We talked last week, you know, our providers have been able to do testing. Sanford's, Essentia, and Family Healthcare have provided testing for those that have symptoms or have been a close contact. In our region, we've heard some discussion about close contacts due to the number of people that are symptomatic. They're having trouble getting tested for close contact. So, that will provide an opportunity in our community as well. The other thing is, we, Kathy talked about the vaccine. And so, there's a lot of planning going on at the federal and the state and the local level for the COVID vaccine. It seems to change daily. So, we had a meeting yesterday that talked about how it will roll out and who would, who will be the first provided with the vaccine is all to be determined. But it's a daily issue and priority for us in, in public health. Hotspots, you talked a little bit about hotspots. And our case investig, well, behind the scenes of our case investigators, there's an actual team at the State Health Department. And those teams focus on corrections and they focus on higher ed. They focus on K-12. They focus on long-term care. So, part of what's happening behind the scenes as well is when there's a hotspot, then the Minnesota Department of Health team is providing resources to get on top of those hotspots. And a hotspot is, I believe it's five cases. And so, there is a lot of attention drawn to hotspots in the community. Locally, what we do is that we've, with our partners that we're working with throughout the community, whether it's higher ed, K-12, you know, businesses, they're contacting local public health. So, before that case is in the system at the state level, we start working with them to help them to figure out who those contacts would be. So, again, we're working at the, at the local level to try to get on top of those hotspots. Like Kathy mentioned, the cases that we have, you know, we can't necessarily, all the data is not always there. So, we, we may not know that it's all in the same address kind of thing, unless it's identified as a, you know, like a long-term care facility or if it's housing at a university. But locally, we're working with all of those people to try to get on top of those cases. So, the next thing I usually try to do is highlight any new guidance that came out from Minnesota Department of Health. Minnesota Department of Health developed some new guidance to align with CMS, Center for Medicare and Medicaid for Long-Term Care Visitation and Activities Guidance for them. So, basically, what they're doing is, as we're trying to balance COVID in the community with visitation and going into fall and outdoor visits being less likely, there's a lot of focus on long-term care and our assisted livings. We have quite a few providers of assisted living and a lot served in our community. So, what they're looking at in that new guidance is that if the cases are, if they're free of a case for 14 days, so they're shortening up the timeframe, then visitation would be possible. They're, they're also looking at the community rate. So, looking at the community spread is an important part of that, the positivity rate. Medicare and Medicaid are using a 14-day rate. And they are actually going with a color. Right now, Clay County is in the yellow, which means that their staff are required to be tested weekly. So, it's, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid in, in long-term care is requiring testing of our, that's just our nursing homes, based on the number of cases in their facility, but also based on the number of cases in the community, that positivity rate. Minnesota is doing, basically, if they're at a high, which is greater than 10, then they cannot have visits. And we, in Clay County, we're sitting at about, I think it's 6%. Again, that's high for us because of our testing in North Dakota that we've talked about. So, the goal is that we, if we can continue to work on community spread, because community spread is what is challenging our long-term care facilities and our assisted living. But they are dependent on community spread, which means the positivity rate in our community being down for them to continue to have visitation for those that are living in our facilities. Minnesota Department of Health also put out, oh, and that is effective October 1st. That guidance is effective October 1st. Minnesota Department of Health also put out new guidance on temporary tent structures and then clear deviser, division, kind of like the Plexiglas thing, for, to allow for visitation indoors as well. That's all I have.
I just been on kids, children in schools that get, that get the COVID-19. Do we track at all where they get it from? I mean, you would think if one kid has, the whole school is gonna get it, you know? But where do they get it from their parents, or don't we track anything like that? Where do, where do the children mostly get their, their contact from?
Yeah, our case investigators and contact tracers are finding that the majority of those cases are coming from their social gatherings. So, when they're getting together at home or with other kids, it is not, there's very few, if any, that are contracting it from the schools. So, they're really getting it with their social gatherings.
It's outside of the schools.
Correct. Outside of the schools is the majority of the spread. They're going out to eat. They're getting together. That's where the majority of the spread is.
Okay.
Part of what, you know, when I said Kathy's hosting those weekly conversations, they're learning from each other, too. So, like, one thing that was discussed recently was locker rooms. You know, some of the, the schools are using locker rooms, some are not. So, they're, you know, when they identify a hotspot or a priority, they discuss it and they share that. But really, they're doing a great job in terms of the social distancing. And when we work with them, they are, there are not a lot of quarantines that are coming out of a positive case in the school. It's more the community contact that's been a challenge for them.
Okay. Any questions? Kevin, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go into the CARES Act committee update. Is Darren around, or?
You're just stuck with me this morning, Mr. Chair. Darren got pulled away to a, to a union negotiation meeting this morning.
Okay, very good. We'll try and put up with you then.
All right. Just a few updates. It's been another busy week. With the CARES Committee, we continue to meet a couple of times per week with continual communication throughout the week on a variety of different issues. Just want to provide a few updates. Yesterday was an exciting day. We sent out 124 checks totaling $981,000 to our, to our local businesses in, as part of the Phase 1 Business Relief Package. So, that was exciting. Phase 2 continues on. We're taking applications through the 15th. Again, our focus for that is businesses from 20 to 50. This board has set aside $719,000 for that, that relief Phase 2. We continue to see a slow response. As of yesterday, we'd only received 10 applications. Eight of those from Moorhead, two of those from, in Clay County. And at this point, six of them had been reviewed and one was deemed ineligible just due to the, the number of people within the business. And so, again, that runs through the 15th at 11:59. We encourage our businesses to utilize that if they meet the, meet the criteria. We certainly would, would like to get that money out if we are able. Our long-term grants are also moving along. We've, last, on October 7th, we mailed out the, the information to 25 licensed long-term care nursing homes, corporate foster care facilities. Again, the long-term care in the nursing homes are eligible to receive up to $25,000. And the corporate foster cares will receive up to $10,000. These businesses are located in Uthala County, in Martinsville, Dilworth, Moorhead, and Yulin. As of yesterday, we'd already received eight signed affidavits back from some of these businesses. And they're, they're reported that they're very appreciative of the opportunity for the funding. And if all goes well, we'll hope to have the checks mailed out by the end of this month. The deadline for cities and townships to spend their CARES funding is fast approaching. We have about a month left. November 15th is the deadline. I've sent out kind of one last email to, to our cities and townships who have populations under 200 and who are being covered under our Small Communities category if they have any funding requests to, to make sure that we get those in so we can meet the November 15th deadline. And then, as, as we've done each week, Darren has completed an updated CARES category funding update. If the board were to approve everything on the agenda today, we would be roughly 70.94% through our, our allocation. We would, that would leave roughly $2.4 million remaining. It does not show the $719,000 currently allotted to the business relief. But as I shared, at this point, it doesn't look like we'll be necessarily needing all those funds unless we have a real uptick of applications here in the last couple of days. And so, with that, I would yield for any questions.
You said, you said November 15th is the deadline for people to use these funds. But some of these people, weren't they just given funds, you know, I don't know whether you sent them out or the city sent them out to some of the companies, here's $5,000, or here's $1,000. I don't know if they had a requirement, did they have a requirement to report back how they're using those funds?
The requirement is that, that as a county and as a city with their allotments, that they, they spend the money. It's not a requirement necessarily of the people receiving the money that they spend at by that November 15th deadline. So, so it's the county's responsibility to allocate the $7.8 million. How those, you know, how those agencies utilize it in the timeframe that they do. They'll be, they're subject to audit, and so they need to make sure that they're spending it the way that CARES would allot it to be.
Okay, so they're, they're a subject to audit, not, not the people that send the money, like a small city. They're a subject to audit, but the people they send it to, they're not subject to audit?
Well, they, I mean, they certainly, you know, there's, you know, like, for us, we're making them sign affidavits to say that we're providing you money for the purpose that you're, that you're, that you're asking for. It's COVID-related. You can't say we have these COVID expenses and then go build a, you know, build an addition onto your office space, for example, with that.
Okay, well, that's what I was wondering, what, what type of documentation some of these smaller cities have to have
from that money that they handed out, so. And, and yeah, and I, I know from, from our committee standpoint, the board's committee, that Clay County has determined that we're gonna utilize affidavits to, in some of those circumstances, to ensure that they're gonna do that. But yeah, it would be up to those counties, or cities and townships, to make that determination, what's best for them.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
Yes, I have one question, Mr. Chairman. And that is, does the CARES Committee have a contingency plan to deal with leftover funds from the small business applications if there are not anymore and so that that remaining balance is still sitting there? Is there, is there a contingency plan to divvy up what's left over amongst the successful applicants and dispersed funds?
Mr. Chair, there, there is a contingency plan. It has not been identified to reallocate the unspent funds to applicants. That's not something that we've talked about. But there have been different needs areas identified in the county that we're working towards. We'll see at the end of Phase 2 what kind of is remaining and then go from there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
No real call vote, or anything with that?
Not yet.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I know that Steve and I had talked, and as you know, Commissioner Campbell and I have been on different quarantine things, but since both Commissioner Campbell and I are on that CARES Act committee, we didn't know if, if this board felt it necessary to possibly add an alternate, since it, it may be important to have somebody there in person or not. And I, I apologize, Kevin, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this, but I know I, I had missed a meeting, and since that's a swiftly moving committee, it may be beneficial to have an alternate identified? Steve, is that?
I'm being offered an alternative.
Yeah, I, I think that would do, to keep, always make sure that we have, have Commissioner insight on, on that board. I think it would be appropriate to have an alternate.
I'll make a nomination that we nominate Grant Whalen as the alternate to the CARES Act committee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to nominate Grant as an alternate to CARES. Any further discussion? Kevin, did you have something?
Nope, I am fine with it.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, excuse me. Gosh.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Uh, let me think, aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move into Kimberly with the Recorder's Office. Ask for some CARES funding request for imaging project.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I'm here to present an imaging and media conversion project for your approval with CARES funding. Currently, the Recorder's Office provides access to our real estate records through a paid subscription. This allows our customers to search records back to 1970 currently. The requests that I'm asking for today will add all deeds and miscellaneous recorded documents to that program that will date back to the 1870s. We have known the importance of these records, but during this time of COVID, it has really reinforced how important that our real estate professionals have easy access to these records. They're important in building abstracts and preparing title work to keep real estate transactions processing. This project will enhance images that are already scanned and convert them into single documents that will be imported into our current software. If approved, the subscribers will have access to these records right from their own computer desktop. Prior to COVID, these documents were available in our office, so the researchers would come in. When we were shut down, we had to do our best to get them the documents via email or snail mail that way. So right now, we're fielding requests for these types of documents almost daily. So I would ask that this project be approved so that we can provide better customer service to our real estate professionals. The total project cost for this would be $65,556.25, and I would be requesting CARES dollars for that. Do you have any questions for me on the project?
Can I make a motion to approve the request?
Second. Kevin, a motion to approve the request for $65,556.25, and it's a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion?
I would just note that this has been through the CARES Act Committee, and the COVID pandemic has really changed the way folks are able to access this, and this has been deemed as a vital need to move forward, so I would support as well.
Okay. Steve, do your thing.
Just to note, Mr. Chair, this would be under county infrastructure as far as the category. Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's your remodeling project coming?
It's coming along.
Did you get that door gone the other way now, or?
Um, not quite yet, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Oh, I have one more question.
Yes.
How long will it take to implement this?
Um, they're gonna start on it right away. So they already have, the company that will be doing it already has my images in hand, so they will be able to start on it right away.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going with the Lake Agassiz Regional Library. Steve, you got that one?
Yes. Morning, again, Commissioner. This is kind of part of our resiliency theme that we had last week. We were hoping to bring this forward to board last week, but just received documents corresponding to the, to the costs of this week. Lake Agassiz Regional Library has continued to evolve and, and really has been pretty remarkable, remarkable in how they've adjusted through the pandemic, but have, have had a number of additional expenses in responding to that, much of it is keeping the areas clean for the facilities. And so the request before you is to allocate 600, or $6,460 in CARES funds to, to address their, their COVID response, and this would be coming from a community resiliency category. With that, I would yield for any questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve $6,460 in CARES funding to the Lake Agassiz Regional Library, community resiliency category in response to COVID-19.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second by Grant to artists of Lake Agassiz. Any further discussion? Okay.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we got is the driver's license reinstatement program. County Attorney Brian Melton.
Morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm mainly gonna introduce Scott Atkinson here in just a minute and turn it over to him with Divergent Solutions, but I, what I wanted to talk to you about today, we have an opportunity in regard to a driver's license reinstatement program. Probably Commissioner Whalen knows more than a lot of us, you know, with driving issues that we deal with a lot of times in the county attorney's office. Sometimes it can be a very vicious cycle where somebody will lose their license, they can't get to work, they can't get money to get their license reinstated, or when they finally get it put together, by that point, they drive again and get, get a new offense, and so they get in some of these vicious cycles where they can't get themselves back into getting the, getting themselves right so they can drive and be productive citizens within the community. So we have an opportunity that we identified with the driver's license reinstatement program through Divergent Solutions. It's a authorized through state statute program, and so the, the community in the county could choose not to implement it if they wanted to, but the county attorney's office is supportive of it. I've talked with Sheriff Empting, he's very supportive of it as well. But we wanted at least to be able to, I would, I turn it over here again to Scott Atkinson with Divergent Solutions, have him just explain the program a little bit more, and at the end, we'd be requesting a motion through the county board to implement the program. I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, thank you for having me here today and allowing you to speak about the driver's license reinstatement program. We developed this program 12 years ago with the support of both legislative sides and have been successful to beyond anybody's belief with this program. So, in a nutshell, what this program does, it allows an individual to drive legally while paying off their fines and fees. So current law states that if you want to reinstate your driving privileges, you have to pay all of your fines and fees in full before you can have your driving privileges valid again. But what happens in our laws is that once you've paid your fines and fees in full in the state of Minnesota, it's a guilty plea. And because it's a guilty plea, you are re-suspended anywhere from one week to 30 days later. So an individual who decided to get their life together, to say, I need to get my license, I need to drive legally, I need to have my insurance, would actually go to court admin, pay their fines and fees, get their driver's license valid again, and because of the payments, of the guilty plea upon the payments, they would be re-suspended automatically. And if they paid three fines, they would be re-suspended for another year. By that time, they're probably gonna get, they're not gonna know they're suspended until they are stopped again, and then the cycle just continues itself. It's almost a cycle you can hardly get yourself out of, especially if you're a low-income individual, because as you know, fines and fees are quite high. Driving after revocations, driving after suspension fees, just one citation is $280. And then a lot of times, you'll get no insurance, because you probably might not have insurance, so now you're up to $780. So when we developed the program, the idea was to keep 15% of the individuals that would qualify for this program, and they do have to qualify. There's an application they have to fill out. It does go up to DVS, and DVS tells us whether they can come into the program or not. We then look into the MinSIS criminal justice system, and we have a criteria set by DVS with us that we're looking to say, can they come in or not, like fleeing an officer or an accident with bodily injury. There are some things that they can't get into the program. 15%, when we went to legislation and had it pass so that we could run this program 12 years ago, I just looked at my numbers for 2020, we're at 90% success rate. People are keeping their license, they're getting insured again. We help them find affordable insurance also. We have agreements with insurance companies such as Progressive, Dairyland. We have insurance agents around the United States now that are insuring individuals in Minnesota, so we get them the best rate as we can, all the way down to St. Louis, Missouri, over into Wisconsin, everywhere else. The program doesn't cost the county anything at all. We did not build this program to come so we can ask for money. We built this program so we could help the individuals. So the cost of the program is $350. Now, an individual only has to pay, after they've been accepted for the program, $100 down. And then we put them on a payment plan based upon their ability to pay. So we look at their income level, we look at, we can look at their bills, and we can negotiate that payment to anything that is affordable for them. So what we do is we usually start out at $100 a month, because an average person coming into our program owes about $1,800 in fines and fees, but if they can only afford $10 a month, we reduce it down to $10 a month. And they'll be with us for quite a long time, but we're okay with that, because the idea is that they can have the opportunity to drive, take their children to school, get a job. Very important that you have that driver's license to get a job, because that's the one question every employer has to look at. That's how we identify who we're employing, right, and stuff. And our goal is to keep them valid, so we work with them very, very closely. They are monitored, everybody is monitored through MinSIS, because they cannot get any more moving violations while they're in our program. So the average person is gonna be with us for 18 to 32 months, just depending on ability to pay. We have hardship ti- times when we can allow them to skip payments, and we really work with these individuals, and we work with them on just being a much better citizens and being a part of society, you know, in the community. So that's it, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Our goal is to reduce recidivism. We try to help reduce the attorney's caseload on these individuals. It's very simple to implement. We do have a contract that we do sign, but the contract basically is to ensure you as a county that we're covering all of our insurances and everything else. It's kind of a, I call it a lopsided contract, it's more in your favor than mine, and I wrote it. But I want you to make sure that, you know, we are very legitimate on this, this program. We help the participants, even a participant that doesn't qualify for our program, what we were able to do is spend the time with that individual to explain to them why they don't qualify, what they have to do, and what part of government they have to go to, and then we give them those scripts to use when they're meeting with government officials so that there's data confusion on the other end between the two people. We found that very, very important that we put that together. We track each participant online, and the county attorney's office has access to that database, so they can always look up and see if somebody's in our program, not in our program, and if they're in good standing or whatever. Our best practice is to always have the best address, the newest address on that individual to ensure that they're changing their driver's license as quickly as possible when they're moving, because we do work with a large portion of transient individuals. That's really, that's the program in a nutshell.
You said in the beginning that if you pay off your fines, that's like a guilty plea.
It is.
Okay, to get into this program, isn't that a guilty plea too then, or?
No, it's not. You're already suspended when you're in this program. Your license is already on suspension through the multiple fines that they currently have on the system. So you can be suspended for non-payment, you can be suspended for payment, you can be suspended because you have too many citations in a 12 to 24-month period. And I'll have to, when we started this program, we took two years to plan this program before we brought it to legislation. We had to stop the program four times over four years, because we didn't know enough about a driver's license that we thought we knew everything after two years of planning. There are so many laws that involve a driver's license in the state of Minnesota, even DVS didn't know all the laws, and we had to sit down with them for four years to figure out which department is, is in charge of this law and which department's in charge of that law. It is unbelievable. We thought, what a simple thing, it's a driver's license. It's not. Not even remotely simple.
So after 12 years, you think you got her down now?
We have it down now, finally. If I would've come here 12 years ago, or even 10 years ago, you probably would've told me to walk out. Because I had no answers. Now, now the de facto, everybody comes to us now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, so let's see if I understand this correctly. Let's say an individual owes $1,800 in fines for the various transgressions that took place. Then your agency goes in and pays off those fines?
No, we don't. By law, we're allowed to set up a payment plan with them, and as soon as we get enough money to pay off the citation that they've paid us, then we pay off that citation for them.
But is there driving privileges reinstated prior to that time then?
Yeah. An individual that comes to us, that gets accepted, you have to have a driving after revocation, a driving after suspension citation to get into our program right now. That is unpaid. So when they come into our program, we can get somebody their driver's license reinstated, usually within 10 to 12 days, while they're paying off those fines, even if they're with us for 10 years. Those will be under our guidance, so that we're making sure that the state is being fulfilled on all the payments.
So that guilty plea isn't slapped on to them until it's paid in full?
Correct.
And they still have to do, is that at the end of it?
Nope, no, we lift all of those suspensions with our program.
Okay.
And when they finish their last payment, we send a notification to DVS, and then all suspensions are just lifted off.
And so if they miss their payments, or it reverts back to?
It does, everything reverts back, yeah, and their driver's license.
To me, it looks like a great program, and I like the accountability safeguards that are built into it, so, yeah, I, I would support this, so.
Two. Sounds like a motion.
I'll make a motion to support this program.
I'll second it. Motion by Grant, second by Jim to support the reinstatement program. Any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you for presenting this. Good luck in the program.
I'll leave you just a quick card.
Okay.
If you get a phone call before your meeting's over, you can put your grocery list on here on the way home.
Okay, Kirk, next would develop a drop-off area to county landfill for citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's one item included in several. That's why Steve scheduled me last on the agenda, because he said you guys had until noon that I could talk about garbage, so.
Well, he, Steve was, in this case, Steve was wrong.
That was misinformation.
Sorry to hear that, I was all prepared to talk for an hour here, so. Essentially, what I came in before you today with is a citizen drop-off proposal, something that we've been talking about at the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and also with the two commissioners, Commissioner Whalen and Commissioner Campbell, for several months. As sometimes happens in government, it moves slowly, but we're, we're finally here to talk about what we'd like to have happen. Essentially, what we're talking about- Essentially, what we're talking about right now is we're talking about trying to move the citizen drop-off area. Currently, we have two six-cubic-yard containers that are basically in the way of the traffic that's moving in and out of there. And what we have to do is we have to come down with a front-end loader, take the containers up to the working face of the landfill and empty them. We have to do that about four or five times a day, so it's pretty inefficient. And it's also very, very dangerous to have people in the way of the traffic that's there. We do not let any private citizens on the working face at all. We don't want to have any pickups up there, any cars up there, any pickups with trailers, any pickups with dump trailers, we don't want to have any kind of small vehicles up there at all. There's a couple of reasons why that's the case, the biggest reason is the safety issue. We have big, large equipment that's up there operating, it puts these smaller vehicles at risk, and so we don't like to have them up there. Also, the other reason we don't like to have them up there is the roads are really, really bad shape sometimes, really, really muddy, and cars get stuck and things like that, so there's some liability issues that the county has that we have to pull these people out. So, what we're going to propose is to move the citizen drop-off area to just west of the existing building, new building that we have out there. And what we're going to have is we're going to have four roll-off containers, and they're going to be 30 cubic-yard roll-off containers, and people can back up, drop their material off, they can pull up on the side, dump the material off if they had side loaders, trailers, and try and deal with it in that manner. So, as a result, we're going to have a lot better efficiency in dealing with this type of material and the safety issue as well. We also are going to move all the recycling containers, we have currently have recycling containers for people bringing recycling material out to the landfill, we're going to move those over to the area as well so we can keep people, again, away from all the traffic. And we also, as I think Commissioner Mojo is out there dumping material this last week, we're also going to have, move the tires, we have tires, a bin for tires, we're going to move those over to this area. We have a bin for metal, we're going to move that over to that area. We also have a bin for appliances, we're going to move that over to that area as well. And again, the main reason why we're going to try and do all this is for safety and efficiency of operations. The cost of the project, and we talked about this yesterday, we had a meeting out there yesterday with Commissioner Whalen, and we also had Everett Nelson, who's the township official, on the phone as well at this meeting. And the township is very supportive of this, again, because of the safety issue, and I think Commissioner Whalen has a pretty good sense of what we're trying to do as well. Commissioner Campbell, I know, we have shared the information with him, and I think he is supportive of us moving to a different area, and I think it's something that's a pretty positive thing. The cost of this is about $350,000, it will come from the reserves of the solid waste fund, and we have money available for that. The reason I'm coming to you today, there's a sense of urgency, there's still opportunity to get this done before the bad weather sets in. I almost hate saying that, I think about last year when we had the blizzard of the year in October. I don't think we're going to have that this year, it probably just jinxed us all, but what we hope to do is if you approve this measure today, the folks are ready to start construction and getting this done before the bad weather sets in. So, that, with that, I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
So, yeah, we had the meeting yesterday out there and looked over where the project was going to be. I think Commissioner Campbell pushed for this early on, and it's, it is, it's a big safety issue, and I think what they've come up with really makes sense, and I think one of the things we did discuss yesterday was that the cost was originally looking at around $500,000, and so they redesigned things and got it down, down to this, I think, a more reasonable figure, so, and I think it is important if we can get this done before the end of, end of this year, so, so I would support this. Kevin, you've been involved in this since we started, so do you have any insight in this?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think this is going to be, just be a really good, really good plan. I think it's going to be really beneficial to our citizens to want to go out there and use the facility. As Kirk said, it'll keep them away from, you know, the heavy equipment that goes on out there. It'll allow for the ability to people, for people who come there with trailers that might have hydraulic trailers to be able to dump into areas, so I, it's a good deal, I fully support it, and I look forward to it being in operation.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion is second, motion by Grant, second by Jenny. My question on this, I see those drop-offs, they're sitting on the concrete slab. Is, how are people going to get there, is that on a dirt road going into that, or?
Mr. Chairman, in order to keep the cost down, yes, we're going to have, it's going to be basically a Class 5 road, so there'll be gravel that'll be available to drive on. As Commissioner Whalen mentioned, I had real sticker shock initially when we looked at this, $500,000 was an awful lot of money, so we had to try and figure out how we could cut the cost as best as possible. One of the reasons, one of the ways that we decided to try and save some money is to, instead of paving it or asphalt the whole area, use a Class 5 road to get to the bins. The other thing that we're trying to do as much as possible, we're going to be using as much native dirt out there as we can so we don't have to import the materials, so we're going to try and save some money on that in regard as well. So, I feel pretty positive about the design, I think it's going to be something that's going to be pretty effective. We've had, obviously, we've had the commissioners involved with it, we've had the township officials involved with it, we've had my guys involved with it, we've had Matt Evans from Burns and McDonald involved with it, so it's a, it's a combined effort to try and make a really good, positive project for the county.
Just a comment, I was out there dumping some trash from the farm, and I appreciate your staff's willingness to allow citizens to do that, and for those that, like me, that weren't strong enough to lift a mower deck into the dumpster, I'm hopeful that this new model will allow, allow for that. And I think that the more we simplify this for the public will mean the less likely we'll see trash in a farmer's ditch, so, you know, I'm hopeful that this is the best option for the public, but also the safety of employees.
Is there a cost to bring stuff out there then?
Mr. Chairman, yes, there is, there's, essentially, we sell airspace, and there's no, you know, everybody pays.
But it's, I think it's minimal.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I would agree with you, I think it's very, very fair.
I brought a pickup bed's worth, and I think it was $20.
Okay. Well, I hope you can get a hold of some concrete yet this fall, I don't know how you're going to do that, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've been assured that that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think it's.
And the folks, and one of the things I didn't mention is that it's, this is basically a change order for a comp stock because they've been doing all the work out there, and we're saving some money by doing that because we don't have to have them mobilized, we don't have to have them demobilized, so we're saving money by doing that as well. And the comp stock has assured me that they can do the, do the work, or they have subs that can do the work before the horrible weather sets in.
Okay, I hope you're right.
I hope so too.
Steve.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you very much. One other item, just very quickly, I have two and a half hours left, but.
Oh, you don't.
Just one, I am, I'm not going to jinx it, so I'm not going to say what's going to happen, but you might want to pay attention to the legislature tomorrow.
I was going to ask you that.
Yeah, I'm not going to jinx it, so, but you might want to, you might want to pay attention.
Don't say another word.
Well, I send my emails to our legislators.
I have talked to them, and I've talked to our legislators, I've talked to other legislators, I've talked to agency people, I don't know what else we can do. I mean, we were, we were this close two years ago, so hopefully it'll happen this time, but we'll see. Keep your fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. And thanks for keeping it short.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go to reports. Jim, you ought to start us out this way.
We bet. On Wednesday, I attended the, coming up here, well, anyway, I attended the City of Morehead Planning Commission, and we forwarded a recommendation to the Morehead City Council to facilitate the development of the quadrant of Highway 75 slash 8th Street and I-94 in the southeast quadrant where the former OSCO store was, and it's being developed by Entrev Development being proposed, and they're going to do a mix, and the Planning Commission approved a change of the zoning there to have mixed residential, commercial, multifamily, so they're going to have a chance to put some multifamily housing in there with the dog park and a collection of stores and businesses and apartments. And so, it's a very exciting project, and they may be, I think, looking at doing a similar development process on the other side of Highway 75 where the Oremata Inn is over in that area as well, so. So, we forwarded that, and everybody's excited about it, and it's on, on the agenda now for the Morehead City Council. That's my report.
All right. Brad?
I just had the Solid Waste Meeting, and we discussed that already, so that was it for me.
Jenny?
Thank you. I attended a handful of CARES Act committee meetings, we are working hard on the Phase Two opening, applications are a little below what we thought they'd be on, but that closes on the 15th, so we're hoping for that. Talked about some different township CARES Act requests, and then several different items that this board has already acted on, so that covers that. Attended the land management of the Divergent Authority meeting last week, we had a property acquisition status report, and they talked a little bit about the post-cloma outreach to Minnesota property owners. Had the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting, continuing to look at possible expansion of their office space, that's a possibility. I had the opportunity to attend the FM Chamber of Commerce Leadership Training Session, they asked me to speak at that, so I did that on Thursday, and then we had a CARES Act committee meeting yesterday, so that concludes my report.
Kevin, do you want to give a report, or are you still waiting till?
No, I can, I'm just going to give real brief here, but I have to go back a little ways. Back on September 23rd, I haven't reported since then, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste Meeting, I think maybe Commissioner Whalen has reported something on that, but the primary item of discussion at that meeting was still future coverage for property insurance for that facility. That continues to be a hot topic, and we're working with MCIT to try to find solutions for that. On September 24th, September 28th, September 30th, October 5th, October 7th, and October 12th, I attended CARES meetings, of which all of those things have been discussed at board meetings, and the recommendations have been brought forward and approved.
Maybe I want to change my mind about being an alternate on that committee.
I do want to point out that, going back to a question that Commissioner Haney had earlier, in terms of future plans, we continue to research and have ready or have some options available to us for what dollars might be left over in each of the categories, so that, you know, by the middle part of November or that latter part of November, we have a plan in place to make sure that, that we use those funds in the best possible way. So, we continue to look at different options available to us there, things right now that maybe were not quite primary in terms of COVID needs, but we, we will have a plan in place to make sure that those funds are used appropriately. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. I've got no report to give, go on, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, I met with the sheriff, sheriff's department on a series of different issues, provided some information to the extra newspaper on our DMV location. On the 7th, we, CARE meeting prep, I also met with Tim Dent on a series of IT matters and issues that he'll probably be bringing forward to our CARES committee. The, we had a CARES committee meeting that morning that has been covered already, staff evaluation on the 8th, we had management on the 8th also, discussing budgets, CAREs, COVID as a whole, and any other issues pertinent to their departments. We had a series of CARES funding meetings on the 8th afternoon. On the 10th, we had a CARE, or excuse me, on the 11th, I met, had a meeting with Ben Madsen from Construction Engineers and received update on the multipurpose community space, and also talked with Derek Appoint on business-related relief for Phase One and Phase Two. And yesterday, we did have a CARES, also had a CARES meeting. Just a reminder that we're having a rural city-county meeting on October 20th at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Law Enforcement Center.
Should put that on the calendar as well, on this.
Okay, yes. And, and then also just wanted to note, we received information, congratulations to Minnesota, we're the only state to this point that has reached 75% in self-response plateau for the 2020 census. And so, just to put that in perspective, the national response right now is 66.6. So, with that, it concludes my report.
Okay. Brian, did you have something to offer?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else? We're adjourned.